Oh, great, okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting on June 6th will come to order. I'm going to mention something that I've actually never done before, but I just realized coming in here tonight that today is D-Day, which is actually a pretty important day in history. So I thought maybe if we could spend a few minutes of silent remembrance to think of that day where so many people died and risked their lives on our behalf, so. So we got a full agenda tonight. First, is anything going to be deferred? That's one of the...
1975 Salem Street has asked to continue until June 20th.
Okay.
But everything else will be heard on the agenda.
Okay, good. So let us first do the bond release and then go into the public hearings.
Okay. This is the bond release for 1812 Turnpike. The applicant has submitted an as-built and a certification from the engineer stating that the project had been built to the design approved by the planning board and that all stormwater structures have been functioning properly. The applicant has made a written request for the release of $15,000. All conditions have been met prior to the release of bond monies. It should be noted that the original placement of the sign was to be at the entrance of the site. However, due to zoning regulations, they had to move that, so the sign has been moved per the zoning and building commissioner. I've taken a photo of where the sign was proposed and where it has ended up. I can display that on the screen for you. Additionally, the shell of the restaurant has been completed. However, there's been no activity inside of the restaurant portion of this particular project. The photos were in your packet if you wanted to look at some of the landscaping. And the applicant's engineer is actually here to discuss the status of the restaurant and answer any additional questions that any of you may have.
Okay. So is all of the landscaping that we had asked for, given that it's a prominent location right on 114, have they done everything they said they would? And how does it look? Because I go by that way every so often, but I didn't pay close attention.
So these were the photos that the applicant's engineer had submitted today. I had gone out last week, and to be honest with you, the grass is actually growing a lot faster than anticipated from the photos that you originally saw, to be honest with you. Right here where the landscape bed is, that was where the proposed sign was supposed to be. But again, due to zoning regulations, they were not able to put it there. The sign is now at the, kind of towards the triangular backside of the site over there. But as you can see, the grass is coming in. It's actually taking pretty well. The engineer, I'm sure, can speak more to landscaping. But overall, when I was out on site, it looked like it seemed to be taking.
Okay.
Can you just remind me, there was nothing in the plan for any type of fence along here? I just have a vague recollection of...
Yeah, I thought we had a... There was nothing in the plan. The only thing that was on the plan was to keep these, the rocks, kind of the border right here on the backside. And then if you can see, I can try and zoom in closer. But overall here, there are some rocks as well. I can pull up the other photos for you as well.
If you can identify yourself for the record and...
Fencing and everything else along that edge, there was about three or four feet of that that was associated with the existing sign. That was all dilapidated, so we just took that down. But the fencing that we had actually originally proposed, we had actually removed at the request of the board because at the intersection would have blocked site distance going on onto Main Street there. And your question regarding all landscaping, all landscaping that was identified on the plan is installed?
We probably should have asked for a little more. Are you, are you going to, is, it looks like sections of the fence are, and kind of, some parts are in good shape, some parts are not in good shape? Are you going to bring them all to the same level of quality there?
The wall?
Yeah. I can't tell, but it...
No, the wall, the wall, actually, that's a property line as well, so we're not, what we're going to, what you see is what we're leaving, that that is actually the property line. We weren't going to hire a wall guy to restack that wall. That's what it was when we got there.
How, are you suggesting we leave any, any of the bond?
To be honest, I cautioned Rebecca that you may choose to do that. The trees, if you could bring up that street tree as well. There's approximately five of those trees that are both active mention there. They actually opened on a temporary seal back in April, I believe, early April, and the landscaping hadn't been complete. So as Rebecca said, she did a site visit last week. I also, again, in my caution, I found it hard to believe that it was going to be even at this point. But with the weather lately, the grass has taken, but it's fairly newly planted and the trees are, again, fairly newly planted. The backside had existing trees, which have all remained, so those are certainly more substantial. And there is no fence shown on the plan.
This is from February of 26.
And what is the story? Remember, we had a discussion about selling cars on the property and there's a little this, a little of that. I'm not quite sure where that all stands.
We're going to come back for that later. It's not on the table right now at all.
If you do come back with that later, it may, we may want to tighten up the screening in the landscaping a little bit because you're going to have more cars and so forth, so. So I, Lynn, do you...
Was that the caliper tree that was in this spec?
It is.
Okay. Pretty small.
You're also looking at a picture like that. I mean, those are inch and a half to two and a half, two and a half inch caliper right there. So they look kind of skinny from where you're looking, but those are good stuff.
Probably five of them.
That's correct. All the ones identified.
But they were both that size.
Yeah.
Yeah. For the benefit of the new members of the board, this was a site plan review that we did last year. It's at the site of, by the Riding Academy on 114. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but the Riding Academy was, in the last year, there was a 40B project built on the bulk of the Riding Academy, and this is where I think they...
Equestrian shop.
Yeah, the equestrian shop was, yeah. Yeah, previously. So, and we spent a fair amount of time on the design of this, so that's why we're asking the continued questions in terms of landscaping and so forth. I...
What kind of restaurant is it going to be?
It's going to be a sandwich shop, pizza sandwich shop. So just to speak to that right now, they are in the design phase of the interior of that. They do have a tenant signed up, and if everything goes the way we'd like to go, probably next three months or so, they should be able to get their tenant in there. So, but all site improvements, everything that's required for the site is all done, and they're just working on that. So that was previously approved as part of the site plan.
So I mean, my personal preference would be to hold back some of the money, say about $5,000, until that other use opens, and then we could see how the grass takes and everything through a season, we can see how the trees take, and then we can decide to release the rest, so.
We were, we were going to suggest $2,500 for the trees. Those trees are about $200 or $300 apiece, so if that's...
Yeah, I'm more concerned about some of the other stuff that, that related to the, you know, potentially to drainage and so forth and swells and, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, if you're willing to put in a little bit more landscaping on it, that may accelerate that. I mean, we probably didn't push quite hard enough, frankly, on terms of landscaping before, but, you know, we are what we are, so.
The discussion kind of swayed towards the building and the architecture of the building, and those, the big focus on getting that to kind of fit into the neighborhood in the applicant's defense. I think the landscaping was really towards the end of the project.
Yeah, and there's actually quite a bit of landscape. When it grows up, you can see quite a bit there. I mean, that's what you're looking at.
Well, then, let's, let's have it go through a season and see what it looks like.
That's fine. I'd rather get all of it back, but if we can get some of it back, that's fine.
I understand, and, you know, we're, we're willing to reasonably accommodate you, but we, given that this is a highly visible site.
It'd make no mistake, George is more than happy to keep this thing looking nice. It's a, it's a beautiful site, and he's done a real good job with it, so he has no intention to let it go from what it looks like now, so.
Somebody want to make a motion to release all but, say, $5,000 of the bond for this property?
Make a motion to release all but $5,000 of the bond for 1812 Turnpike Street, CNC Auto.
There won't be much interest, but is that including the interest at this point?
Yeah, $5,000 remains and everything else goes.
Everything goes.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a timeframe for that, the remainder of the five grand?
I...
Six months?
Let's reasonably shoot for six months without being a firm commitment. That's fair. So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we move into the public hearings. And the first one, I know it's a technical thing, the way we're doing it, the way we are. Rebecca, if you could explain to the new members why we're, we have two for the same subject, that would be great, and for the audience as well.
Definitely. After a view with town council, it was found that under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the North Andover zoning bylaw, Section 10.315, it requires at least four of the five members of the granting authority must vote when considering a special permit. The resignation of two members of the five-member board does not change the requirement of four votes to take action. Thus, any special permit application pending before the planning board where less than four members are eligible to vote should be reheared. So the board can no longer act on this hearing because two, two of the members have resigned, and there are no longer four of the five eligible voting members. And a new public hearing on the same matter will be opened to rehear the same application filing. Notice has been reposted in the newspaper, and a mailing has been sent to the abutters again.
So, but the intent is, obviously, since you've written a decision for tonight, that it's, it's, given we've had two or three reviews, pretty extensive reviews, I wonder if you could, I'd ask you to explain the gist of this project and what we've done, and then we can have the applicant's engineer talk briefly about it as well, so.
Definitely. So this is an application for a special permit for frontage exception. The applicant proposes...
I wonder if, can we get the...
Oh, I can get the, I have to get the locust at the other packet. On the screen is the locust. So the property in question is 1099 Salem Street. There is currently one house on the lot. They would like to subdivide the lot into two, and in order to do so, are requesting a frontage exception. They meet all of the requirements for a frontage exception in terms of the acreage and the contiguous buildable area, et cetera. When they originally came before the board, they were not looking to do much in terms of the stormwater management. The board felt as though it needed further review, and so the town engineer took the time to go through with the applicant and did some back and forth in terms of swell and some other stormwater structures and whatnot that would help the infiltration of the area. The bottom portion of the driveways over here are in conservation's jurisdiction. They were in riverfront. They actually just received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Additionally, this portion you see that breaks up the lot, that is actually the, the New England Power Company, National Grid. So they own the easement that passes through there. So there are, or I believe they're still, the applicant is still waiting for, no longer waiting for permission to have access over that easement, or they are still waiting.
I mean, technically, that's not two separate parcels. It's all one parcel that's being divided into the two lots.
It's just broken up through the easement. Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So the town engineer has reviewed the project and has officially signed off on the stormwater design that has been proposed, although they needed to provide an operations and maintenance plan. They have now since provided an operations and maintenance plan. And again, the Conservation Commission has issued the order of conditions for the driveway portion of the project.
Okay. And can you flip to the site plan?
Mm-hmm. And that's the existing house and the proposed lot line with the existing driveway, and this is the proposed plan. And Craig Marshanda can speak more to the project and the stormwater enhancements that they had gone through with the town engineer, John Borjese.
Yeah. And I think for the benefit of the new members, our bylaw stipulates that any time a lot is created that has less than the normal frontage, but it has the minimum allowable frontage for an exception lot, it has to come to the planning board for approval for a special permit. And in order to get the reduced frontage, the lot size has to be three times what is the norm in the district. And I think the other feature is, we're not allowed to have more than two contiguous to each other, so this would conform to that. So we've been through a number of hearings on this, and we're very close to making a decision, but we had to pull it back for, because we didn't have a quorum, so.
So one other piece of background is, the bylaw also calls for if you disturb more than an acre of land, that you go through a land disturbance permit. And this project is slightly less than an acre of land, and therefore, the board has really challenged the applicant to prove to us, not only will you be less than the acre, but you'll also control stormwater to make sure that it doesn't impact abutting properties.
So when you say less than an acre, is that over the entire project, or is that just as it's subdivided on each parcel?
The entire project.
So I'll defer to the engineer. If you could identify yourself.
Craig Marshanda, Marshanda and Associates. And Rebecca actually covered, you know, very, very well what I was going to say, really. But like she said, it's an existing single-family house, property's been vacant a number of years now. We've decided the best way to take care of this lot and develop it without really is putting subdivision road in and disturbing all kinds of land and making a real mess up that would be to do a frontage exception. And as you guys mentioned, we've been here several times. We've put a lot of effort into stormwater management for the satisfaction of the town engineers, and Conservation Commission did issue, you know, our approval with them, and we're hoping we can wrap this thing up. We are under one acre of disturbance, as was mentioned, and we did present an exhibit, I know the new members haven't seen it, at one point, showing our estimated disturbance if we were to incorporate all the stormwater standards. And we were, I think, approaching two acres of disturbance, and we'd be cutting into the steep slopes in the back. And generally, I think everybody was, was happy with this smaller, you know, footprint, tighter lots to minimize disturbance on the site.
I did have more questions I don't think I had asked before. In terms of your septic permits, do you, have these, have you conducted all the park tests, and have you gotten anything back from the Board of Health?
Yes, we did conduct all the tests, and we, we have submitted to the Board of Health. We just haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
We submitted, I want to say.
We want to make sure that our decision, you know, makes that conditional, because if that changes anything, they'll have to come back. So any, any other questions?
So I don't have a problem voting on it tonight if that's what the board wants to do, but I think since this is technically a new hearing, and I don't know if there are any abutters that are here that want to speak on it, but I think we do need to make findings based on evidence on the record tonight, not based on what's been in the past, which I know I have not heard. So could you just maybe speak briefly to the items that we need to find, such as, you know, this, so we've been told that there's, the lot exceeds three times the minimum lot area, so there's...
Yes.
Okay. That the minimum, minimum continuous street frontage, what is that?
I believe it's 50 feet over the frontage and the width.
Okay.
Which Lot 2, as we're calling the one to the right here, is the governing lot in that case, but that, that does meet the 50. The one to left is, I want to say 70-ish feet, that law hard. So we do hit that in both lots.
Okay. Great. And I think the chair mentioned that there's not a contiguous lot, which has gone through this.
Correct.
Can you discuss how this would, if in any way, affect the neighborhood at all?
Sure. Yeah, the, the abutters, I recall seeing some of the meetings were the folks back up here toward this right corner on Huckleberry, and they were, seemed to be in favor of our proposed development, so we're keeping the houses smaller and down toward the front of the site. And their houses are all situated up here, near, near the cul-de-sac. So they all like everything staying down toward the front, and of course, that was their biggest concern. If we blew out the site and advanced closer to their property, they, they weren't really fans of that idea.
Okay. And I know I, in our packet, we had the correspondence between the town engineer and yourselves and the back and forth, and that you made the changes that were suggested, so I'm sure that was appreciated. I just have one other, do we have the order of conditions from CONCOM, or just that it was made?
I have confirmation from CONCOM that they have issued an order of conditions, but I can't get the order of conditions as well.
Okay. It just might be helpful to attach with this. I think that's the questions that I have.
One other point that was in the abutment that's called earlier, I think he's diagonally across from the frontage. To be honest, he wasn't in favor of the project. He thought it impacted the, the neighborhood in terms of just the setback, the smaller frontage character of the area. So we did have one abutter show at a hearing. He's been re-noticed, and I don't believe he's here tonight.
Is anyone here today?
Yeah.
The ONM plan, was that the same ONM plan accepted by CONCOM, or is that just for the special permit for frontage exception?
The ONM plan we submitted, I believe it's just one.
Yeah.
Is it, no, but does CONCOM have that too? Is that part of their orders or also? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I just, this is probably of no consequence, but I just, just for clarification, as far as...
Can you identify yourself for the record, Mr. Kindred?
Yes, I'm sorry. Dave Kindred, Kindred Holmes. So as far as the, the New England Power slash National Grid easement, we, we did receive an assent from them, you know, approving our plan. But some of the languages that our attorney finds objectionable in it, so he is actually going back to National Grid, and he's trying to get them to modify some of the language in it, but, but we do have an assent in hand. I know that, you know, your draft, you know, your draft approval makes a chudgy to that anyway, so, you know, it's probably of no consequence, but just kind of an update.
That's part of your job to get that, come to a satisfactory outcome.
It's been modified.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, any, any other questions from the board? Comments?
Just have to back it up to the conditions in the event that there's any condition that hasn't been discussed yet, to make sure that that gets on record.
Well, okay.
Just in the draft.
We'll do that before we close the public hearing.
Yeah, just, just in case that it hasn't been voiced till...
Yeah, and explain the context. This is pretty much of our boilerplate ones for de minimis size projects of this nature, but go ahead.
There was only the one thing that came in at the, the last minute was a suggestion in terms of technical language in regards to the easement portion of the property and referring to it as it is referred to in the deed as the New England Power Company instead of just National Grid. And then also changing another technical word, easement holder instead of owner, and then changing another one to assent to construction. So there was just some technical suggestions and edits made by the applicant in regards to that particular condition, but it doesn't change the overall understanding of the condition that they need to get their approval in order to do anything. And the board does not give them that approval, the, the National Grid needs to give them that approval.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions from the audience before we close the public hearing?
Just that part of the DPW requirement is that an AutoCAD drawing be submitted to them at time of development, again, as evidence that they're not disturbing more than an acre.
Does that mean...
It's, it's one of the draft conditions.
Okay.
But I just, again, want to get it on record that, that's not in his last memo, but it was something that he has asked for.
Okay.
And then he's going to then confirm with planning that it is in fact not more than the acre disturbance.
Two bits of business. One, the, we have to close this public hearing, but we also have to dispose of the other one.
There's not enough members to dispose of the other one.
What are we supposed to do? Let it hang out there in space forever?
So...
I mean, you can motion that you can't take action on it, I guess.
Here's the thing, here's what you guys are going to do. We're going to accept your withdrawal of the initial application without prejudice. Is that...
Yes.
And you will give us a note to that effect.
Actually request that you do so.
Okay, and you'll give us that in writing, so...
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice on...
1099 Salem Street.
The original one.
The original, the continued public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now, we need to have a motion to close the public hearing on the new special permit.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 1099 Salem Street for Kindred Holmes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we'll, let's take a read through. Rebecca, one thing I think I would like to put in the findings of fact is that the design minimizes the disturbance to the site by locating the houses on the front of the property. And I think that's always one of the things that we try to do, is to minimize the disturbance, so I think you should add that in there.
And I can add to number nine, the order of conditions. It says that they had received an order of conditions, but I can ask that a copy be provided for the file. Is that sufficient?
I think I agree.
Yep.
Because if they provide the AutoCAD of the staking, wouldn't we want it at the...
Wouldn't we want to confirm at some point at the end that that's the actual disturbance? That they don't go outside the staking?
You mean after?
Yeah.
I guess we could try and move or duplicate it in some way, shape, or form and do it prior to a certificate of occupancy and state that...
Well, you might want to try it to number 21, which is one of our standard ones about, you know, delineating the clearing, and that we always delineate that. It's got to be approved.
But it would still be prior to a building permit? And I thought Lynn was trying to say that, don't we want to follow up and make sure that that is...
Yeah, I'd say prior to occupancy.
To kind of give it a...
Yeah, confirmation that the...
That they didn't build.
Maybe we could add it in again. I mean, yeah, that's, that's fair enough, yeah. I do think in that section, the prior to any permits, we need to add the condition about the Board of Health, getting all the Board of Health approvals.
So where would you like prior to...
Prior to any disturbance or building permit, that we have to do that.
Okay, so that they have to do the soil testing and...
Well, they've done the soil testing.
Oh, the septic.
I'm talking about getting the septic approval, because if the approval, if they move the location or requires more disturbance, it'll kick in, but let's make, we, we still have to get it approved anyway, so.
I can add that, definitely. I can add that, definitely.
Off topic subject, Boston Main River, that ran down that area?
I think that was the easement way back when.
Okay, that's where, okay.
I think you already, on 22, I think you can add just a septic because you have the Board of Health in there, has received all necessary permits and approvals from the North End of Board of Health, and just say for all conditions, including septic.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to write another one.
We don't have to write another one, yeah. It's just that it is funny, today, there are very few projects we do that have septic systems. It's really the exception rather than the norm. And the process, the regulatory process is actually a little bit different because of that, so, but this is one of them.
We needed the approval from the Department of Public Works in terms of the AutoCAD staking, and then additionally, we need them to have a job away from it.
I mean, I'm more concerned, yeah. It's the impact of the decision on the plan that we have approved.
Yep.
Okay. So with that in mind, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the special permit as amended this evening?
Make a motion to approve the special permit as, with the amendments that have been suggested by the board.
For 1099 Salem Street?
Yes, for 1099 Salem Street, the one that has not been withdrawn.
Yeah, frontage exception slash permit. Okay, motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Your first decision. That wasn't so bad. Thank you. So. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next applicant is not, or his engineer are not present at the moment, so if we could move-
So we'll go to 102 South Bradford?
If that's okay.
So 102 South Bradford, who can hear the rest? Everybody, or is it just?
Just for the-
The four of us?
102 South Bradford is just the four of you.
Okay, right, okay. So, is there anybody here for, John?
Attorney Smolak is here.
Okay. Can you give us an update on where we are? I think there was a small punch list of items left from last time.
Definitely. So this was an application for a watershed special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 440-square-foot addition and 168-square-foot screened-in porch off an existing home in the non-disturbance and non-discharge zone. At the last public hearing, there was an issue in regards to what constituted as gross-floor area and whether or not this particular addition had exceeded the amount allowed by the bylaw. So the building commissioner has provided a formal decision stating that the footprint of the house is the first floor and the second floor, and that the addition per the 2006 bylaw change allows 50% of the gross-floor area, which they are under. And then additionally, it was sought out for legal counsel to confirm that in fact they would be reviewed underneath the 2006 bylaw, and she has since confirmed that as well.
Okay, okay, good. Can you, just on this one, give for the new members the short story of what the project is about and?
Yes, so essentially, the addition and the screened-in porch add the impervious surface in the watershed. That is something that the board tries to prohibit in terms of creating more impervious surface. If a structure is more than 2,500 square feet of gross-floor area, you are only allowed to expand by 25%. If it is under 2,500 square feet of gross-floor area, you can only expand by 25%. In this particular case, there was some question called into whether or not what gross-floor area was in the calculation of that, so we went to the building commissioner. Also, there was a bylaw change originally. It was just 25%, no, on any gross-floor area. And so in 2006, there was a bylaw change that distinguished that 25% and 50%. And so then, that kind of made things a little bit more complicated, but we got through it, and legal counsel confirms that it's the 2006 bylaw.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that is open on this one?
Stormwater's closed. They've signed off on it. Conservation's confirmed the wetlands delineation. They don't have any jurisdiction on the project, so there's nothing else in terms of department review or stormwater review.
Lynn, do you have any questions?
No.
Pete?
Aaron? Nope.
Okay. So, given that, let's close the public hearing. If somebody could make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to close the watershed special permit for 102 South Bradford Street.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Let's look at the decision here. I do think when you do your findings of fact, when you deal with the new bylaw and so forth, you ought to make the references to the Building Inspector and Town Council, that they stipulated that this isn't compliance. It just adds a little bit more effort.
Yep. I did get a verbal confirmation from legal counsel, but I do have a written formal determination by the building commissioner that I can reference.
That's fine.
The only thing is, we should put in here what the, so that we don't, no one has to go through this the next time, is we should put the limit of any future square-footed expansion, because they were at, they can only go, what, 27.5%? Based off the, what, 18?
You know how, yeah, that's actually a good point. You know how like what we did on the prior one? We said that the lot could never be reduced other than the minimum in the district. This is a little bit sort of saying that, you know, it still has to comply going forward. You can't get another 50% in terms of what they have now.
Yeah, you can't get 50 every time.
Yeah.
Does that include the addition to, the 22% of current house, or does that include?
Well, I think what they did is, the way I, I reckon, like I say, restated the base, whatever the base is, that the 50% is calculated off of-
The existing structure as of 2006.
Correct.
Which is the base. And so they've increased upon-
Yeah, so that's actually a good point, is we ought to stay, you know, with it.
So it's 1872 is the base they're doing?
The only open would be is if the bylaw changes again, and it allows something different than that, so.
Yeah, but I mean, anything we do is contingent on the bylaw. So we ought to just say that, you know, remaining increases under the existing bylaw are no more than X square foot. That's good, I like that.
So it's 1872, they're going 440, that leaves them 504? Is that right? No. 496.
Need your calculator.
No, 496.
Does this great porch count in the addition?
No.
How's the bylaws running? Yeah. You can be our new expert on rewriting the bylaw here. Cleaning it up.
I'll make a motion to approve 102 South Bradford, watershed special permit as amended.
Do I hear a second?
John's getting up, wait, wait, stop.
Just have one quick question, John Smolak, attorney for the Afcon. In terms of, and I discussed this with the record and Gina, so I thought I'd bring it up. I don't want to delay things too much, but there's a request for a $4,000 bond. And I know that customarily, historically, over the past several years, it's probably been around that amount, but it was based on projects that might have been larger, or houses that may have been larger, although it may have been the same size of addition. I'm just wondering whether there's any way that we could take, I mean, the $4,000 bond is probably a third of the cost of this project itself, and I'm just wondering whether we could consider going down to a $2,000 bond for this particular matter.
I want that contract, if this is a first.
Seriously?
Well, it's a small, it's a 440 square foot.
So I prepared bond information in the event John wanted to pursue this request, which I'm perfectly fine with. However, it shows a history back to 2000. I provided this to John as well. It would, it would appear that back in the early 2000s, that bonds of this type were roughly $2,000. As everyone's aware, engineering costs have gone up, house bill costs have gone up. At some point, it transitioned to typically a $4,000 bond. There are two $1,000 bonds that have been proved somewhat recent, and they were for replanting plans, one of which on Campion Road and one on Sailway. There was bonds established larger than $4,000 for three homes that were built directly across from the lake, one of which was 1661 Gray Pond Road, which is set back on a slope. The other two are 1831, which, Peter, you referred to as the pervious pavers that are actually concrete pavers. That applicant could have gone much higher on the slope. However, they opted to go to the zoning board, get approval to actually build it closer to the lake, less disturbance overall, better project. That was 8,000, which was conditioned they could get a $4,000 release once the lot was stabilized, as well as the house to its immediate left. Was an $8,000 bond, and it was conditioned that they could go back, ask for four until the project's complete.
What do you say?
The history's there. I'm not, I'm not saying this isn't more de minimis, however, in March, the first one on the list was a similar-sized project that was 4,000. Again, that applicant didn't-
How long is this project going to take in your client's estimation?
We should do what's consistent. Couple months, maybe.
Is it necessarily a big deal to hold on to that 4,000 for a couple of months?
Well, you know, I think it may be in this situation, but I mean, it's a smaller house, and I'm just trying to see if there's any way to give a break to a smaller homeowner. And, you know, as a general matter, maybe going forward, something for the board's consideration is, you know, basing a bond based on the construction cost or something like that. But again, this is just a small project. That's what I consider a large bond, but, you know, it's obviously up to the board to make the decision.
So I think, just based on what I've heard, my sense is to have something that's consistent with what we have been doing. Having said that, if at some point, we could consider tying it to the, you know, scale of the project, the cost of the project, I wouldn't be averse to considering that, but at this point-
I mean, it feels to me that you should keep it the same and just do a fast release when it works on.
Yeah, I mean, the conditions are there that, should they meet them, I was a little surprised by the auto dealership coming in so quickly, and, but they've met the requirement. I mean, you always have the option for landscaping in the decision. I just tried to show what we have done, because consistency's always been a concern. If you want to condition 2,000 at site work, I would just be concerned that at this point in starting work, do we have a real good feel of the construction cost at this point in time for all applications? I don't know that we'd be able to ascertain that.
I think it should be 4,000.
Again, on Aaron's point, if you can get someone for 12,000 for this, I'd be shocked.
So what's the process for modifying the standard here? The standard seems to be 4,000. What is the process? Is it just the planning board setting a precedent to reduce it?
Yes. It's our, completely our discussion, and I think, and Lynn and Pete and myself, just not compelling reason to change it.
Ballpark, how many bonds do we have out there that haven't, people haven't come, finished and haven't come back for the money?
Well, the watershed ones are shown in that picture.
No, I'm just saying, but ballpark on the whole, I know there's at least a dozen that people walk away from.
For all subdivisions.
Usually, but they're not all.
Negative subdivisions.
No, there's quite a few that aren't.
So, Aaron, what's your pleasure?
There are, I mean, you can see on that back.
Well, I, you know, as a homeowner, I would prefer to put down less of a bond rather than more, but consistency does matter. I would err on the side of consistency. And for two months, it would be one thing, I think, if it were going for a longer period, two months-ish. I don't, I don't see necessarily a problem with maintaining consistency in this instance.
Okay, so, good argument, but-
No, yeah, I mean, maybe it's something that could be considered to be more formulated, formulating down the road.
Fair enough, fair enough thought, so.
Thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, would somebody like to make, or did somebody already make a motion?
We had a motion and a second, yeah.
Okay, motion made and second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You can add this up. Okay. 1665 Gray Pond Road.
So this is an application for a watershed protection special permit to modify the original watershed protection district special permit approved on April 5, 2016, to authorize the reconfiguration and replacement of the existing driveway with stormwater and drainage enhancements, and install a patio and ground pool. The applicant, since the last hearing, has updated his design, which has been reviewed by both town engineer and stormwater consultant, and it was found that the upgrades will further help with the runoff and infiltration on the driveway and provide best management practices. Additionally, the applicant has incorporated a swimming pool maintenance plan, and the maintenance, operations and maintenance plan has been incorporated into the decision in terms of the swells, the storm trench, I mean, for the driveway.
Could you put the-
Yes.
So again, the voting members on this would be Aaron, as well as the three of you.
Would you like a locust as well? I can try and-
That, it's on the-
Gray Pond Road, they'll leave it right here.
Ms. Zarico, can you just help us color, paint the picture a little bit more here?
Sure. This revised plan basically incorporates a, an infiltration trench to the east side, right side, and looking at it from Gray Pond Road of the driveway with check dams, provides some additional treatment of runoff. There hasn't been any other changes to grade or other elements of the site plan, other than specifying locations of the trees that were proposed to be planted previously. That was something I think the consultant asked to have added to the plan. I think that's really it, John. I mean, there really was not that much of a modification.
And the house is already here, right? So we, this was a project we've done, and we're just modifying it so that you can clean up the driveway.
Right. The site is stable, the site, you know, it's been, the lawn's been mowed multiple times. I mean, it's, you know, it's an existing, stable situation.
Is the, I saw the non-discharge line on the plan. Where's the, or the non-disturbance, where's the non-discharge line?
That's the heavy line, yeah. Just a tiny bit of the, of the lot out in the back slope.
Pete, do you have any questions?
I think the last time, we asked you to take a look at best practices, so appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome. Again, just to reiterate, you know, we usually do what we're asked, Peter. Six or seven people are professionals that reviewed this, and we thought that best practices had been implemented to the extent that we were aware of them. practices had been, had been implemented to the extent that, that we were aware of them. You know, you pushed on that, so we did enhancement. But it wasn't for, for lack of trying, it wasn't for lack of professional insight from, from seven different professionals. So just wanted to, you know, let you know that when we're asked to do something, we usually do.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, is there no gas at the house?
There's no, there's no gas service out in that, in that part of town, or at least in that part of Great Pond Road.
So is the propane for just the pool here, or is the propane for the house too?
It's for the house.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, and that's in place and, and existing.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board, staff, from the public? If none, I think we can close the public hearing on 1665 Great Pond Road Watershed Special Permit. Somebody make that motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on 1665 Great Pond Road Special Permit.
Watershed.
Watershed. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't usually have this many decisions in a night.
Got stuck though, missing a call meeting.
Yeah.
On number two, we, we approved the watershed special permit to allow the, didn't ZBA allow the construction of new home, not us, correct? They had to go to the ZBA for the finding.
They did.
On five?
Number five for the pool.
That was a second trip they had to make to the GBA, right?
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
I think we should just add that, add that, yeah. Yeah, because we can't approve the new structure, so just clarification that we approved the design, basically, not the-
I think that's the way that it was written in the document.
Probably, yeah, that's okay.
But I can definitely change that.
Always, always, yeah.
I saw part of the swimming pool maintenance plan as well.
Yep, okay. It's been a while, I forgot. We've had a couple of pools lately, too.
I know, it was very similar to the other one where the, the drawdown and all that other good stuff.
Yeah, I think this is the fourth one, one that we've done in the watershed, and we follow the same process each time.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 1665 Great Pond Road as amended.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. Thank you.
The other applicant is still not here, so it'll be a good continuing meeting.
Okay, we'll keep on going. So we're doing the wheel operator, public hearing, 285 Holt Road.
That's correct.
If you can give us the context, because I know we talked about it the last time, but there's also, I think, a lot of moving parts on this one, so.
Of course. So this is an application to modify a site plan review special permit that was approved in August 19, 1998 to authorize the replacement of an ash storage enclosure and install a new wet scrubber enclosure and filling in a service basin up to the asphalt. So the applicant was originally in for a board discussion item to see whether or not a modification would be necessary, or if it could be an insubstantial change, because the project itself is really staying within the same footprint. The board at that time had decided that because of the nature of what takes place within the structure, that they wanted a butter notification. So the applicant has filed for a modification, a butter notification has gone out. Stormwater review was not part of the application, because they really were not expanding their footprint, nor was there really any stormwater to review. The application has gone through department review, and the departments have signed off. Fire has granted them, quote unquote, a variance in terms of the sprinklers within the ash building. There was some question regards to the fire safety of that particular building and whether or not the applicant felt that there would be corrosion and things of that nature, so that they wouldn't be functioning properly. So they have applied for, quote unquote, variance through the fire department, which was granted, and they will now adhere to other fire prevention and protection as laid out within the decision that you'll see in further detail.
Yeah, they have a letter from the fire department.
We do, and that's referenced as part of the decision as well, and that they must comply with those standards that were put forth by Chief McCarthy. Additionally, the health department has reviewed this project as well. As you know, as part of the original permit, they are supposed to be doing, I think it's quarterly reporting in regards to any emissions or any other types of environmental concerns. The monitor they use is Tech Environmental, so the health department and both Tech Environmental have reviewed the proposal, and they approve of the construction, including monitoring reports to be done at each phase to make sure that it meets their satisfaction before another phase is initiated. Because if you remember from the first discussion, and just to give you an update, they, they don't plan to cease operation during the time of construction. They intend to phase it out, so there'll be one phase, and then they'll close off half of the building and move all of the operation into one. They'll complete that building, and then they'll move the operation into the second half. So they want to make sure that when they do do that phasing, that everything is contained and things are all still where they, where they should be in terms of an emissions and environmental level. The board did conduct a site visit back in March, so if there's additional questions, the applicant is here to address any of your questions and concerns.
I wonder if the applicant could just sort of give a brief overview of the project. I know, because we have several new members, I know you did it the last time you were here, but if you could do it again.
Hello, my name's Gary Colette. I'm the plant manager of the wheel operator site. So the wheel operator plant is a 1,500 ton per day waste or energy facility. It's one of four waste energy facilities located in the state of Massachusetts. There are only four disposal sites in the, in the state of Massachusetts, so we, we provide a vital, a vital service for, for the community and for the states. The aspect of shutting down is, is really not an option for us, and not for the state, because there are very limited disposal options available for solid waste. So we are actually proposing to rebuild an existing building that was originally constructed out of steel and steel siding, steel, steel vertical structure members and siding. That structure has now outlived its, its life, and we're proposing to rebuild that structure under existing foundation, but we're constructing it out of pre-stressed concrete panels. We have some mechanical components inside of that, inside the existing structure, made of steel. We are proposing to remove those mechanical components and, and put them outside of the ash containment area, so they have a better lifecycle, they're easy to maintain. There's an existing ash clarifier, water clarifier, that has really been, has been obsolete for many years now, that it's really just an empty pool that collects rainwater. And as part of this project, we are proposing to basically probably do what we should have done years ago, and that's basically just bring it up to ground level and, and cap it off.
And that will become the staging site?
Yeah, that allows us a place, because we're using the pre-stressed concrete panels, we're going to be using a very large crane, and that'll be our staging area for the crane, and also to stage the concrete panels, so they can be lifted and hoisted onto the foundation.
And that's depicted on the gray shaded area there, so it's a pretty large area.
Are there any other permits that are, can be required?
Well, we have a permit from the DEP to, to modify our operation, and so we are very strictly regulated, what we do, anything we do is defined in our operating permit. So if we deviate from our operating permit, we, if, if we change a piece of equipment in the plan, that has to be brought before the state, and the state reviews that and, and gives us approval. And we have received all approvals to do what we intend to do and how we intend to operate the facility and manage the ash during the construction phase.
And you'll obviously have to get a building permit, so.
Yes, and, and that application is, is moving through the process.
Any, any more questions? Lynn?
The, the visit to the facility was very helpful.
Glad you visited, thank you very much.
Appreciate you facilitating that. It was really neat to see the claw.
You know what, it was a wet raining day, like today, a month later, it's still a wet rainy cold rainy day.
The claw was very impressive. There's two of them. Well, I saw one, and it was really something.
Well, for the benefit of the two new members, I think seeing is believing the state of the, the current ash house, it is a high level of corrosion, so this project is absolutely necessary. It's, it's a benefit to, to replace this structure. And then this small building that's attached that they intend for the scrubber, it's, it's within the existing footprint, it's going to be placed on the side of the, the new building where there's currently asphalt, so there's no worry about stormwater runoff. It, it won't really change from, from what is currently, so I thought it was a very informative outing, and based on that, if I had a vote tonight, I would just recommend to, to approve this.
Any other questions? Why don't we vote to close the public hearing for this?
I make a motion to close the public hearing, hearing for wheel operator, 285 Holt Road, site plan review modification.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
On number eight, it says C memo from Chief McCarthy regarding the fire provisions that you talked about earlier, do we have, can that be part of the, this as well?
Well, it's just whatever is usually referenced, though, if you, in the bottom it says C memo from Chief McCarthy dated April 14, 2017, is essentially part of the decision. It doesn't get recorded at the registry of deeds. I mean, we could do that if you wanted to do that, but technically, what we do is that it just becomes part of the file, so it lives with the file, it lives with it electronically, and it lives with it in hard copy as well, because it is a document that is part of the decision, just like the plans or the, and whatnot.
Okay, yeah, I, I just want it to be as part of the, part of the record, so that there's no one here objecting, but people have certain rights, just want to make sure that it's part of the, it's a part of the package.
Definitely, and I-
Hopefully you saw a copy of that, but if not, we can-
Sorry, I'm in the back of the yard.
Okay, we can bring it up if you want to read it.
Yep, and then the other issue is I talked to Chief McCarthy, and they really were, wanted to make sure that, that, that they did in fact comply with the recommendations and, and the provisions that they had put forth. So as part of, I think it's, one of the special conditions is to make sure that they, fire will inspect and make sure that they have complied with everything that they've asked for. Yes, that's-
The other thing you might mention, and the finding of facts is that the applicant's received is all the necessary for most of the DPs, and maybe getting a copy of the top page of that from the applicant would help maybe put that in files, too.
You didn't submit that, you had submitted to them, so I'll have to second. I think it, I think it's approved, just as you also met off, and so we do have a record of that.
It's just in the building permit.
It's part of the discussion, the insubstantial change, so we can just add it to the finding of that.
So if we add that to the findings of fact, and this is probably being a little too picky, but I don't know that this board actually knows what all the DEP requirements are, and so the wording might, might be appropriate to say that the applicant has reported that all necessary, because we don't actually-
Or we could have a condition that they-
Or a condition, yeah.
That they had a condition, maybe we do this condition.
I think that's, that's the better way.
That's probably the better way to do it. Yeah, you're right.
So how would you like it stated?
Say that-
As a condition.
Oh, as a condition.
Yeah, as a condition, that they have to demonstrate that they've, they've done that, yeah.
Thanks.
On the bullet points from Chief McCarthy, on the fourth one, it's number four, is why they got that four?
In front of manual pull stations, that was carried over as the numbering.
Very nice, Dave, no. Nice, yeah.
Well, it looked like, I was like, why four manual pull stations, as like at each doorway?
It's a technical term.
On thirty-two, are you going to have a dumpster on site?
Are you going to have a dumpster? To the metal, in the road?
Yeah, are you going to do, are you going to live load those?
There'll be some of both.
Okay.
Depends on the size of the numbers, they're taken down.
Okay. Are you going to wash them inside the plant before they go out?
Yes, the building is going to be completely remediated prior to any demolition.
Okay.
Depends on materials, load it to the ground, if there's any additional that is disposable, it'll get cleaned at that point.
Okay.
But then it'll get empty loaded into dumpsters and covered prior to transport. It's really, the DEP governs that for us, it's part of our operating permit. So, and again, with fugitive ash, the mentions of fugitive ash, that we really have a higher bar set for us for that from DEPs, so we cannot have future emissions any time.
So, dumpsters associated with construction, both at the fire department, that's a different dumpster.
This is kind of a standard condition.
Okay, that's just carried over.
There will be no, there'll be no dumpsters associated with water, anything like that.
No, but even associated with construction, the fire department requires you to pull a permit with them, but it's part of the building permit process, they'll direct you to go to the fire department.
Whatever they want.
They just want to know where they are in town in the event, in the location.
Sure.
Because of construction debris, and it could be clinical.
Dumpster fires.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
These are welcome to us.
I don't know that we have to condition that length, because it's part of the building permit application process?
No, no, I was just, I was more curious about that.
Nope, the other one's just a standard, and we talked about actually taking it out, but then you forget to put it back in when you use this as a template.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification for the site plan review for 285 Holt Road, Willer Brader North and Dover, Inc.
As.
As amended, yep.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. We appreciate your patience on this, that you're willing to come back and work with us, and I think doing it in open is, I mean, you remember, see, I was on the board when the stuff came originally, and remember where the hear, I don't know if you heard the story of the hearings with the scrubbers, when the scrubbers were put in?
I was at the plant at that time, and I remember going to some of the public meetings at the high school.
There were quite a few people, as you know, so they, I feel that, you know, I think it's probably a credit to you that there's nobody here tonight, that people feel comfortable that you do the reporting on a quarterly basis, that you make a contribution to the town and so forth, so, thank you.
We don't want to be a private community, we are a private community, so.
Yeah.
And the board members that haven't visited, you're more than welcome to come to the site at any time, just come after me.
Yep.
It's our plan, too, we have tours all the time in public, Cubs Cubs, ice cream stands, so our doors are always open, so we appreciate you all through the time, appreciate you all.
Certainly appreciate how wasteful we all are.
You gotta remember, you guys get a little kid back from that.
I don't know if we want to move on to the next item and see if the other applicant shows up, but I don't believe, I know the engineer said that he was not going to be able to attend, but that the applicant himself was going to be attending, but as you can see, I don't think the applicant.
Well, then he'll just have to.
Okay, we do have a continuance till June 11th, so.
That's fine.
I think we should be all set.
Is it June 11th or June, our next meeting is?
Is June 20th, but I have a continuance signed until June 11th, but I can get them to sign it to the next meeting, since we have a couple of days.
Okay. Okay. So, the housing plan update, and then I do want to talk about the master plan.
Can we just revisit that one? So, what circumstance are you in if they don't continue it? If we only continue right now?
Well, I guess maybe then the question is, what do we have to hear from them that we're not going to do when we're not, when this one, because we already have heard it?
Right, we've heard it, and they have in fact closed everything else, so the storm water, the wetlands.
So, maybe we should just finish it off.
Yeah, just, I'm concerned if for some reason he was to not.
Leaving it open, I mean, you know, generally we don't like to do it when they're not here, but, you know, I mean, we don't have any, any open questions, right?
No, there's no, there's no, there's no questions, but.
No, we're going to wait till Aaron comes back, yeah.
So, I don't think we have enough, right?
Well, who's holding on this one?
Yeah, well, why don't we do it? I guess, were there any que, what was open? Why did we not vote?
Aaron left.
Did he leave for a reason, or is he coming back?
He's coming back, isn't he?
Is his jacket there?
He took his jacket and he left, so I, we don't have enough members to vote or discuss the matter.
No, the housing plan.
I'll just go out for a second.
Want to start looking at the minutes? You can do that, or?
Yeah, why don't we do the minutes real quickly? How are our minutes, Lynn?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 2nd, 2017, and the May 16, 2017 meeting minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Take care of that.
So, okay, so, yeah, if we could talk about the housing, we could talk about the master plan.
And that's jeans.
That's jeans. Probably running down the street.
He has left, so, so I recommend we'll speak to the applicant tomorrow, get him to sign that a continuance, and if not, we'll have to contact you, John, and see what happens.
Okay.
Okay. So, now we did the minutes, and we're waiting for our regional housing plan update.
Okay, so, yes, regional housing.
Regional housing plan, I'm going to take one more stab at this. So, you should have received in your packet a memo that went to John. This is an effort that we are trying to update our planned production plan, which expired in 2012. We've partnered with Memmerach Valley Planning Commission to kind of help us with this effort. We are at the point of scheduling a local community workshop, I'd call it, that will entail inviting stakeholders, which have a real, you know, interest in this plan, as well as residents. We have scheduled that for June 27th at seven o'clock. We are asking for a representative of the planning board to be a stakeholder. I think some of the members have other commitments at this point, so I'm extending it to both Jennifer and John, to see if you have interest in being a stakeholder. You certainly do not have to. There's really going to be just two local workshops, and there may be a meeting in between, but for the most part, it's not a huge time commitment as much as an interest in identifying housing needs, not only affordable, but we have all other kinds of housing needs that we're going to try to address as part of this plan, which means, you know, senior housing, disability issues that we have in town, things like that, as well as the affordable component. John, do you have anything to add?
So, it's really, it starts with an inventory, right, of what we have, and then sort of builds on that based on.
So, at this local workshop, and what I hope to have hopefully a week before, is actually students of Salem State that are partnered with Memmerach Valley Planning Commission to kind of get that existing inventory and what our housing stock is today. Also, the plan in 2012 identified those statistics as well, so we're going to build upon that, update it. I hope to get stakeholders those numbers, so that they can kind of digest it before the local workshop, and then at the local workshop, bring the residents into that discussion as well, and see, you know, what they're feeling in terms of their needs and what we can better do, do better to address those.
Is there a particular community that's leading this?
So, in the, in the Memmerach Valley Planning Commission, I believe there's 15 communities, 12 of which are participating in this, so there's a regional component, and then there's, each chapter will be a local community, so we'll have one chapter, and that will need to be approved by both the planning board and the board of selectmen before being certified by the state.
So, Gee, can you talk briefly about just where you think constituencies in town that are interested in this?
So, the stakeholders, the initial feedback came pretty strong from the Housing Authority wants to participate, the Affordable Housing Trust, multiple members want to participate, and the Commissions on Disability, actually, right away sent back interest in this. The selectman, Chris Noble, Nobily, I believe is how you say it, he has, at last night's meeting, signed on as a stakeholder. Zoning Board and Planning Board have each been asked, I just haven't heard yet, as well as the CPC. We hope to have that.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that at our meeting on Thursday night for the CPC. So, I mean, I think probably, you know, the minimum Mary Beth will be interested, but she's tied in with the Housing Authority.
Yep, I've spoken to Mary Beth, she is, Kathy Hoop, the director, has actually said, she kind of inferred that a lot of people will want to, that she'll, she thinks most members will have interest in this.
Oh, okay, good.
So, I think we'll have a strong presence from those type, the Affordable Housing, the Housing Authority, the Commission on Disability. The senior center's bringing it up at their next meeting, so really between this week and next week, I think a lot of people will have it on an agenda.
You might laugh at this a little bit, but I'm thinking maybe having a few of the developers, you know, like David Steinberg, you know, the Frigida guys, you know, and maybe.
Minco as well, is another one.
Yeah, he'd be good, even like somebody like Ben Haskett.
Yeah, so I was going to do a personal invite to those people in terms of just getting them to the, to the table at that local workshop, maybe not necessarily a stakeholder, but trying to at least get them there with their concerns. And I think they'll be able to address a lot of resident concerns, too, and to be able to speak to their perspective of why that's not necessarily, you know, something that they can do in that area, and give us the reasons why.
So, can you explain a little bit more what this process is? I'm sorry, I'm just so new to this, that there's local workshops, and then what does it consist, like what does it look like? What are the meetings and commitments?
So, the local workshop, the first one, Memmerach Valley Planning Commission actually is going to really run it. We're going to promote it through the website, social media to try to get residents there. The first one will really kick off those statistics, so where we are today, how we compare to the region, and do a lot of the data in terms of our existing stock. And also talk about the first plan, and, you know, kind of what we did successfully implement, and other items that were recommended that didn't necessarily get implemented. From that, we'll hopefully be able to ascertain our needs and our goals, and then between that and the second workshop, kind of, we will work to lay out, and the stakeholders would be involved in this piece, lay out how we think we can get to those goals, so what action items we think. And the second workshop would be, again, inviting all those residents back and kind of speak to those goals and how we could get to them. And then there'd be a draft at the end, that draft would then be circulated to both the planning and the board of selectmen. So, we hope to complete this by December. Memmerach Valley Planning actually received grant funds, so this is at no cost to the town, and the commitment, we signed a memorandum of agreement with them that we'll do our end and hold these workshops, and the commitment is to complete that plan by year end and submit it to the state, we would expect in January.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good, good, so I think this is great, so.
And it's also, I should say, it kind of comes into play with the master plan as well, so one of the objectives.
How do those interact?
So, we have a consultant hired already for the master plan. I've contacted them, we're going to have a conference call next week to make sure the agenda at that local workshop meets their needs, too, in terms of what type of questions that they would ask residents and stakeholders in terms of the housing. So, we want to make sure we definitely cover their interests in terms of the master plan as well.
So, will this, what comes out of this workshop process, will that be an input into the master plan, or is it just something for that committee to consider? How does that?
I think the master plan will still kind of document existing needs and maybe goals that tie to what this housing plan will be, and it'll likely reference this housing plan, because the master plan's going to take a considerably longer time than this will. It's similar to, we just hadn't approved our open space plan, I believe in January this past year, so that's a component of the master plan, too, that I would foresee the master plan reference in that plan, and not substantially asking for changes to it.
Great.
Great, that's good. Let's, can we segue to the master plan?
We can, and if either of you have interest in being a stakeholder, please just let me know.
And I just wanted to preface that last night, I presented the, to the board of selectmen, they have a process now where once a year, each of the boards go and summarize sort of what happened over the last year to the board of selectmen. And I thought it generally went very well. Rebecca, thank you, you're, it was funny, the board of health came second, they didn't have a slide deck, so. So, it was great. I mean, it worked out perfectly, because it's so much easier to have them look at the slides, and you can talk, and they can see pictures and so forth, so it worked, it went really well, so thank you for that.
It was a team effort, they did a lot of the work, too.
Yeah, so that.
And Peter, your fertilizer man was.
I was really, really pleased, John, that you highlighted the mailer.
Yes.
That was great.
Yes, yes, yes. I was going to make a remark about it, but I thought one of them would, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't, so I. So, at any rate, I thought, you know, the discussion went very well, and we actually did have a discussion about the master plan, and that's why I wanted to set that up in context, is my takeaway from it is, they basically said, "Master plan, planning board, it's all yours." I mean, that's, I shouldn't use it, those words literally, but I picked up pretty much a sort of a willingness to let us run with the master plan as much as far, whereas before I felt that there was a little bit, you know, a little bit more control from the board of selectmen and the town manager, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but I just thought that this is ours to run, and what I think the town manager said was that a very important role of the board would be to facilitate that discourse with the community, because again, in the same way we talked about with the regional plan, having workshops and so forth, it's actually even more important for the master plan to do that, so that you talk to all of the constituencies in town, that, you know, I think as part of this, you would go to the PTOs, you might go to the school committee, you know, again, the housing component, the open space component, the economic development component, you might run a workshop with developers and so forth. I mean, there's any variety of different ways we can go with this, but it, I think the, one of my pickups was that the town manager perceived that, you know, our ability to get people talking about it and engaged and listening and hearing a lot of different thoughts about the future of the town would be a critical success factor, so I was actually all in all pleased by that. That puts a little bit more work on us, I think collectively, especially with you guys, because we'll have to, I think, bear a little bit more of the role, but we do have a really good consultant working with us on this, so I think that will be helpful. So, I think the first step is the committee to pick the members, because, you know, it's, even if the planning board's going to play a key role, there is actually going to be a master plan committee of the people who are actually going to do some of the day-to-day work. And I know, Lynn, you had been on that, I don't know if you still want to do that till your term expires, or whether you.
The selection committee has not scheduled any interviews as of now, so that's been the.
Yeah, but I mean, at this point, I want to push that forward, if I have to go to whoever I have to go to and say, "We're going to have a meeting of the committee next week", you know, I'll do that.
Of the selection committee?
Of the selection committee, because I feel like that's the next step, is we have all the applications, it's a question.
I reviewed them all, I'll do it still.
Yeah, good. So, that's sort of where it sits, but I kind of ask everybody, any sort of thoughts on this, because I think it's, to some degree, it's a blank slate, we can do whatever we want, and take whatever leadership we want, so we ought to, we ought to go for it, so. Any ideas?
I have scheduled with the consultant and town staff only, not public or planning board role, a June 21st meeting, where town staff would just sit with the consultant, just give their issues, concerns, thoughts. It's an hour meeting that morning, and then we are going to do a tour of the town with Eric, myself, I think Andrew, I'm not positive, to get that piece going. So, the existing condition kind of work is going on behind the scenes at this point, of the reports that are already there, the old master plan, the existing housing plan, they've been provided all those documents to kind of start getting their arms around existing conditions, but I think getting the committee in place, picking the people, and starting to interact with the master. to interact with the master plan committee is important, I think, sort of the not.
Any thoughts? I mean, I'd be interested in you guys' perspective, as being sort of new, you almost may have a fresher perspective that, you know, is untainted by having to go to all these past meetings and seeing all people come in.
I think in terms of the master plan, I think that plays as much public process as you can. In terms of the, how many applicants do we have for the selection committee? Twenty-three, I think, data. And how many are, how many, is there a number that we're looking at, you're looking to put on? Seven to nine is generally the number that they like. I think just really striving for a diverse group that can give different perspectives, you know, I think that's, that's really important to know. It's nice to know that the planning board is trusted with spearheading the effort, and I know the master plan's kind of a long time in being updated, and if there's anything that maybe they can do to help, yeah, if they're looking to it, and if we can get updates from the consultant through you guys, I think that would certainly be helpful as well.
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree with what he just said, that I think, as we, you know, anything I can do to help, I'm happy to be involved in that, and I think that getting a diversity of opinions on that committee is going to be important, because I think if you have a diversity of opinions on that committee, then you have more avenues to reach a diverse group of opinions in the town. And I think if you have those avenues and start to, I think it's such an important thing, that it is important to reach out in different ways, to, you know, school populations, to the senior populations, and all of the different aspects, and perhaps get the people who aren't coming to these meetings all the time, and get them to weigh in, and think about what, what they want to see. Because I know a lot of people have opinions about how they want to see the town develop, but I don't necessarily think that they get aired in the right place, but if we can give people an opportunity, and get them excited about maybe coming and talking about these things, and thinking about these things, I think that will just benefit the town.
Yeah, good. I think one, one of the things, it's, I find, I, you know, lived in North Andover about four years now, and there are a lot of people that have lived here for a long time, and have really great sense of how things have changed and improved, and how to continue on with that, but also kind of like, like you said, people that are newer can often offer a different perspective, having lived other places, both urban and suburban, and maybe why they came to North Andover, and what's driving them to continue, so I think getting a good mixture of those opinions.
Yeah, because that's one thing I've always said, is if you've come here, recently you've chosen to come here, and you've made an affirmative decision, you know, so that counts for something, so. Good, well, I'm excited, let's, let's continue to have a short discussion on this. I will, I'll contact Eric to see if we can get the committee going again, so we can get the members in place. I think, you know, as we move forward, I think the focus of how people can help will probably come into a little bit more emphasis and focus.
So Jean.
The consultant, the consultant actually has a subcontractor that specializes in the public engagement and social media.
If anyone's interested, if you go on a site called Co-Urbanize, that's actually the site we're using for the regional housing plan, so Memmerak Valley Planning has posted on Co-Urbanize, where you can solicit feedback, you can ask questions, you can just do all kinds of things with that. I don't think that necessarily would be the site for the master plan, but I trust there'll be a site like that, that will really help with the, the social media part of it, and getting feedback for people that don't tend to come to a meeting.
So I was actually going to ask about the social media piece, Jean. Do you know if their approach will be to have their own site, or to see if there's a way, I mean, if you were to, if you were to sort of visualize the social media sort of dialogue in the town, you know, there's a lot of interest groups, you know, whether it's parents of school-age kids, or, you know, other types of groups, where there's a fair amount of activity, and is, do you think, do you know if they envision somehow trying to tap into those existing social media forums, to try to sort of engage with, hey, there's a master plan, how does that apply to your group? Or do you think they're, they're sort of taking an approach of, here's our site, if you want to involve, you got to come to our site?
I can't answer that definitively. I think they'll do both.
But that would be great.
Is my thought.
That would be great.
And I think they'll do what we ask.
You can't just do social media.
No, no.
You're going to limit a vast portion of the population in town.
No, but it's important to touch the.
And I wasn't.
Only do social.
What I was trying to suggest is, if we're creative in how we do social media in addition to the other forums, I think it will make a big difference.
Oh, yeah.
You know, otherwise, we risk, you know, having this kind of turnout, which is pretty sparse.
Yeah. But I think to Peter's point, that's going to be information that they're not, the consultant's not going to have unless we tell them.
Correct.
As we tell them, there's a, you know, Facebook, North Andover Moms Facebook, they're not going to know.
Correct.
So, you know, then tell them, you know, these are the places in town that people tend to congregate, we should put a standard sign there.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, I think that's.
Great, great.
Definitely agree with that.
Good, great, well, yeah, keep this as a placeholder for a five-minute discussion, so we can get to do, push it forward, so. Anything else before we close? All right, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.